Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you very much for hearing this. For any of you who don't know me, my name is Frank Denton and I'm the current commander of the Comox Valley Economic Development. We've been talking to your staff about the possibility of getting some additional space in Marina. And I appreciate the opportunity to update you this afternoon on our situation. So we've been around for a long time as a sailing club, about 50 years. We're entirely a volunteer-driven organization, and we have about 80 members at present. We have, over the years, the most recent years, our emphasis has changed considerably. We used to be, let me say, as all the gentlemen's glad, and we did a few boat racing on Sundays and had a good time. More recently, due to the efforts of several really keen volunteers, the emphasis of the club has changed completely. Now, it's all about kids, it's all about teaching kids, and sailing regattas with dinghies for kids, and that's really the whole emphasis of the club right now. Our operations, we have a sailing school, which I'll talk a little bit more in about a minute. We have what we call a race team. Members use our dinghies. We have dinghy racing. We have a few assets now. We have about 18 dinghies that we, the club owns, and a couple is already in the market, so half of us still do keel racing. We like to think that we're enhancing the quality of life in Comox Valley quite a bit. I won't go through all these things, but just maybe I could underline a couple of things that we do. We run this sailing school in the summer from Marina here, and that started about five years ago, and it's grown to be very successful. Last year, we had about 160 people through that. This year, we had about 200. They're quite long courses, they're usually about a week long, and there's a few adults, but it's nearly little kids. We have to teach them. We have a full-time coach and three part-time coaches. Both, they teach both the sailing school and what we call our race team. Our race team is very intensive training for young kids. It starts very early in spring, just finished last weekend, so it does very well. And then, there's a few other things. We have, just flipping to the bottom here, in terms of economic activity that we rent to the valley, for the last few years, we've had a major dinghy regatta. It's a four-day event, and I think, year before last, we had about 185 competitors and about 50 people supporting those competitors, coaches and trainers and parents. So that brought about 225 people into the valley. Our club also has been responsible for getting Van Out 360 to stop here. Last time around, we didn't want to do that, and we persuaded them that it would be a good idea. So that brings about 450 participants and supporters to the valley. And I'd mentioned that we have no taxpayers, according to what I'm aware of. Just a quick shot, these are our race team kids. You can see them practicing there. They're doing extraordinarily well, traditionally and to some extent nationally. And they're really putting Comox on the map as a sailing, sailing training place. So we have some space down at Marina now. About three years ago, we started talking to your staff about additional space. They're supportive, but they obviously want to consult with us. Currently, our space that we utilize is more than 100% capacity, and we really have very inadequate space to rig and use our boats. We have, for our sailing school, we have demand that we're not able to satisfy, particularly for the youngest of kids. We call them, they race in the little opti-boats, they're a single-person boat, and they, that's their training thing, and we're oversubscribed to that program, and we can't really meet the demand. To make it work well for us, we need to have really another full-time, sorry, we need to have another full-time coach, and we need to have a few more opti-sailboats. And that would optimize it from an economic point of view, and make it work well. Looking ahead, I just would mention that we'd like to increase our membership within the community. We'd like to reach out more to the schools, and we've appointed a volunteer executive position to do that. And we really see our future of our club as well, kids. And we'd like to expand and enhance our relationship with the town, which traditionally has been a little bit independent of. So this is our ask. This, sorry. You can see here, this is an actual diagram of what you see there. Sorry about the quality of the image, it's rather poor. These are our two floats we have now. This is one float, which we rent from the town. I think we pay essentially the normal rate for the mortgage for that float. We have a second float here, which we rent from Gas &amp; Go. It's much cheaper than the float we rent from the town, and the reason for that is that it's in the direct line of fire from the boat ramp, so it's probably not very much used to them for any other purpose. We have a little shed here with all our supplies and sails and things for our dinghies, and this is what we would like to obtain. This involves displacing two keel boats that are there now. As I understand it, there are other locations for those particular two keel boats. But at the end of the day, we recognize that it does displace two keel boats from Marina. We would submit to you that we think, and that in terms of our contribution to the community and the quality of life in the community, we're really contributing a lot more than a couple of keel boats. We would, of course, lease the space and pay the normal rate for the spaces. In terms of alternatives, we've not been able to come up with anything practical. We could live with space on the upland, but that doesn't seem to really be a practical option, there really isn't any good space. You are in the midst of building your facilities there, down at Marina, and when that is completed, we would be more than happy to rent space from you for our functions, and possibly some space in the building if it's available for additional storage for ourselves. We did look at one point in getting space on ADOC down here. It doesn't really work for us, as you can imagine, a whole bunch of little kids getting boats ready, all our stuff installed in this shed, and you really, the coaches really have to keep an eye on it. It can't really happen without the ADOC, it doesn't really work. So that's it. Thank you very much indeed. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions? Mr. Counselor.
One question would be to our staff about the two boats that would be displaced. Is there, in fact, a spot for them, or?
We do have spaces to accommodate those two vessels if we need them.
So, and would they be, would they be, or whose boats are they? Are they just privately owned?
Yes, they are.
So, they'd be good?
The, they're really interested, they would be okay with it, yes.
Could I just add for a moment that your staff are understandably concerned about the impact of what the various user groups want to contribute, and we understand that. We do have a bit of a timing issue. We want to get this sailing place for the 2017 season. We have to buy some additional opti-boats, we have to organize to get the boat built, we have to hire another coach. So, from our point of view, there's some timing issue.
Counselor Price?
And again, a question of staff. I just wonder what's needed of counsel? Is it just to keep us appraised? And it seems like the people who are renting those spaces, it's an agreement with them to move elsewhere.
I think CEO can speak to what direction counsel.
I don't know. Our perspective at the present time is that we would like to take a bit of a wait-and-see approach with this. Because of the work we're doing with the upland portion of the Twin Sail buildings, we want to see how that all comes together after construction is completed in the springtime, and then address some of these other interests that we have. We've had desires expressed by Compass Ventures, currently is holder and provider of instruction for kids through the rec center. We've got the Sailing Club that wants to expand as well. We've got private interests that are looking for space in our facility as well. And there are community interests from the community at large that are looking for the ability to use some waterfront features that we have. So, we thought it might be best to look at this collectively, but not yet. And so that's, that's the challenge that we're facing. We've got the Sailing Club that's interested in moving forward now, and there's our perspective, which is, we'd like to be able to wait and see and kind of look at this from a higher level.
I mean, in the past, I know there's been expressions of interest for things like kayak and dinghy storage. I see in your letter that you reference perhaps storing some kayaks and all. The one question I had was, maybe addressed the issue of the two keel boats, but you're talking about compensating revenue of $3,500 coming from 10 boats stored in a rack and three boats stored with a mess set up. Now, is that the club boats? Like, are you buying 10 more boats? Or, like, I'm trying to, like, that map where they're drawing, just showed like three or four boats on that.
It just shows the rack as well as other spots.
Right.
Most of our boats and the boats for our club members, to whom we lease boats, spots on this rack.
So these are privately-owned boats that would be part of your club? They would come down there and use them, not club-owned boats per se?
That's right. We need about, we can accommodate about 10 boats on this rack, and about two or three boats on the float. We need for the club itself about four or five additional boats. So, some of these boats would be our club members who are net space.
Bring your own boats down there.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Perhaps we could ask for a staff report at this point. We do have a lot of competing interests, and we're going to be talking about one a little later tonight. We, I know there's been Pacific Pro Guide, they, they want something. I think even our own people, we, we need to look at maybe a floating building for, for some of our staff, or, you know, something. These are ideas that maybe we're going to talk about a different time. I just think right now that, that staff report, bring all these interests together and see how we can work with, with everybody in the near future. Yeah, of course.
We need more Marina.
Yeah, more Marina, that's always a challenge. Well, at this point, we don't make decisions at the time of delegation. We'll leave it to the staff to bring it back to us. I guess it's more of a timing question than anything else. Staff are obviously very much engaged in the project that's underway. So that may mean that for 2017, it might not happen, but we will be engaging in our strat plan discussions here in a few weeks' time, and maybe that will be something on the agenda for that as well. So, yes, bear with us and see where it takes us. I can't guarantee any positive response necessarily for 2017, but it is on our agenda. Yes, Counselor.
Just, I would support that motion for a staff report.
We don't do motions here at delegation this day.
When it comes to the table. But in that staff report, I'm hoping it would indicate the interest from all parties involved in that.
Oh, yeah.
I know some of them, I'm not sure all council members know all of them, and that would be very helpful.
There's stand-up power lawyers, there's kayakers. Anyway, I do thank the delegation for making the presentation and bringing that to our attention, and it is something that we're going to have to address here over the next little while.
Thank you all.
All right, next delegation is Jeff Crawford here on behalf of Comox Valley Economic Development. He talked about the Strategic Priorities Report for SEBDS, and welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. I thank you all for having us this afternoon. My name is Jeff Crawford, and I work for the Comox Valley Economic Development Society. Also, work with my colleagues in marketing communications in here as well, Derek Reesley and Greg Thorup. So keep me on message if I'm on here. What you should have in front of you, or have received from our office, is our Strategic Priorities Report, which is our quarterly update that we provide. And it presents our outputs for current measurements, which relate back to our work plan, and relate back further to our five-year economic development plan. Our job specifically is to provide small business support, communicate opportunities and news about regional economic environment, drive interest in investment and tourism for our region, and all the time collaborating to do so. This presentation I'll go through will just provide you with a high-level summary of our performance measurements, touch base on a couple of our highlights. This first slide is just a quick snapshot of kind of where we're at right now within the office, projects we're working on, and upcoming events. It's a busy time here. With regards to small business support, this is my area, this is what I live and breathe on a day-to-day basis. Really exciting news out of this department would be our collaboration recently with the Comox BIA. We're very fortunate to work closely with them and host a really interactive session on online marketing in October. We had over 40 members of the BIA up to that session, and we're, we've received a lot of positive feedback from that, and we're applying a part to that session now. Another key highlight out of this area would be our partnership currently with the Comox Valley Chamber of Commerce. We're looking at doing another version of the Business Leaders Survey, and that's going to be going out shortly this fall, and we'll be recording on those, those highlights and trends and statistics early in January at a forecasting session. Export. Why export? Export is a key activity for economic development offices, which leverages, helps bring investment and money into the community. Businesses that export tend to also be innovators, they tend to spend more on R&amp;D, and they tend to be, have very efficient business practices. A really neat announcement that we have, which will be announced formally tomorrow, but is that we have been selected to be part of the Export Navigator Program, which is a program being offered through the Ministry of International Trade and Small Business of British Columbia. So we will be part of this pilot program. Only four communities in the province have been selected for this, and we are one of them, and we will be working with the support of resources and tools from the province to work with our guys to sporting markets and look at, look at new trade. Destination marketing, a real big success in this area for the, for over the first three quarters is that hotel room revenues are up 35% year-to-date. That's huge, huge increase. A big reason for this has been the ability of our destination marketing team specifically to leverage funds, and they've been able to leverage funds significantly this year, upwards of $400,000, and that is very big with regards to the extra reach that enables our office to do with regards to marketing activities. And they are currently working to prep their, their applications for 2017 and build on this year's success. Thank you for our visitor center, continues to trend as one of the business centers. Year-to-date visitation, true visitors, which are visitors that are not, Jeff, not locals, these are people from outside the area. They're at 14% year-to-date, strong numbers from Europe and the U.S. This summer, we launched a new integrated online booking system at visitor center, which featured a pilot marketing campaign, and included local tour operators such as Pacific Pro Guide and Swell's Island Jitterize. Communications to regional business, to industry sectors, as well as to our external consumers and potential visitors, is a core activity of our office. Social media continues to see increases in engagement, and is a critical tool that SEBDS has been utilizing. Earned media coverage specifically on the Comox Valley has been significant, particularly during our V.C. Shellfish and Seaford Festival. We were able to garner an estimated $1.3 million in national, as well as in international exposure, which is very significant. Partnerships and collaboration, we can't do what we do without, without them. We're very fortunate to work closely with organizations like the Comox BIA, but essentially, most, if not all, the activities we do are a result of partnerships and collaborations, and we've been very fortunate this year to enter into official, formal MOUs with a number of organizations, maybe SEBDS and others. And then stats and resources, I'm not great to go through the statistics and resources, but to mention that this is an activity that we, that we, that we provide. This is a core function. We collect, maintain, and distribute this information to our businesses, to our investors on a regular basis, and we do that via our website, and we do that via our monthly statistic newsletters that go out to our, our database of investment and business contacts. So that was a brief overview, a high-level overview for you, the indicators, our core indicators that relate back to our work plan, or relate back to our five-year plan. And thank you for having us, and happy to answer any questions.
Counselor.
Thank you, Jeff. As I recall, when John was here the last time, there was some thought to establishing some office space in Comox, and I'm wondering where that stands?
It, we're still working on that. We are in close contact with the BIA, and we are exploring that a lot of the year right now. We haven't finalized anything yet, but we are still going down that path.
Any other questions?
I have one other question. During the election, I'm just wondering if you've got any concerns or accommodations for the export piece?
Any people moving here?
Same question.
Relocation. We haven't been briefed on anything yet. We work real closely with our provincial partners. We are a trading province, we are a trading area, so we will, we'll maintain a very close eye on that, and we work closely with the province and their, their trade officials as well, so we'll, we'll be in line with whatever's coming, and we'll have to react when we're ready.
If you could get a copy of your slide presentation to Shelley and Sheefer, because I know I'll see that very quickly. All right, well, thanks for your presentation, and I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
All right, third delegation here today is regarding Nautical Days. We have Sue Wood and John May. Welcome.
John May can reserve for any card operations question. Thank you, again, for having us here today. We're here to give you a little bit of an overview of what happened at Nautical Days 2016, which feels like a really long time ago. So let me remind you, it was actually the weekend when summer arrived. Until then, it had been spring and miserable, but the sun came out and the breeze was beautiful and the sky was blue, and thousands of Comox residents and visitors came to the park to enjoy Comox Nautical Days 2016. While it's difficult to track numbers, how many people actually came to the festival, we have information from those that participated, that their numbers were up, and we believe our numbers were up through the weekend. I have described Nautical Days as the quintessential community festival, and I put some numbers here today, brought some today to prove that to you. This year, we had 24 groups perform on the main stage. In those 24 groups, there were 163 people. 162 of them were local performers. We had 17 events take place in the park involving 785 people. 723 of them were locals. We had 103 craft booths on site, 94 of them were local. We had 25 food vendors and exhibitors involving 61 people. 58 were local. So throughout the weekend, if you add up performers and crafters, event organizers, game organizers, if you add up everything, there were 199 groups, for a total of 1,453 local participants. We also use entirely local suppliers, fencing, space, all of those things are all local suppliers, and they're wonderful because they sharpen their pencils very significantly in their customer business. So, I think we have proved the point, that we are the quintessential community festival. This year, we were delighted to welcome the left-chenek governor of British Columbia, Judith Guisham, for the first time. She participated in the V.C. Day celebration in Marina Park, she took part in the parade, and was with us for the ceremony of flags. And again, we worked cooperatively this year with the Filbert Festival and IHOS Night Market in our overall festival weekend in Comox promotion, buying a little bit of time on Shawty TV, local radio to promote Comox overall for that V.C. Day long weekend. For the first time, Comox BIA partnered with Coach and Shuttle, and sponsored the festival weekend in Comox Shuttle. It picked up people from Starbucks in Courtney and dropped them off at the Town Circle in Comox, and it scrubbed that line for three days. And hundreds of people took advantage of the fact that they didn't have to worry about parking, and were delivered to downtown Comox to not only take in the festivals, but also enjoy some of our retail opportunities and the businesses that we have here in Comox. We also, again, this year, had wonderful support from those marvelous people at Quality Foods, who know how to light up a night better than anybody else. Every year seems to be more spectacular than the last, and this year is no exception. The Comox, or, sorry, the Quality Foods Festival lights was more spectacular, and was the perfect big finish to the Comox Nautical Days, big weekend. It's important to note that Comox Nautical Days has been going on for nearly six decades, which is a remarkable achievement. And it is only possible because of the tremendous support from the community, from the town, from the dozens of local sponsors, local suppliers, and hundreds of volunteers that make this happen here. So, overall, it was a lot of fun. Do you have any questions?
Well, thank you for that. Questions, you guys, again? Counselor McKibben?
I just want to say thank you for sharing the production manual that's very.
On a major festival.
It's very impressive, and it's been passed around to customers, so I appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, Susan. I love the local emphasis. That is outstanding. 1,453 local?
Yes. All the bodies that participated in the weekend with a fishing derby, and all those people that plan all of those little nets, you know, almost, I'd like to round up almost 1,500 of them. Excellent, thank you.
Counselor? Yeah, and I applaud you too. It's, it was good working with you and John and getting that from my very small part that helped us get it together. One of the things we as a council have talked about was, some of us missed being part of the information booth, so maybe, you know, next year, as we.
You're on.
Yeah, as we can do that, because it does bring that small-town flavor too.
Well, this year, the information booth was manned by three nonprofit organizations, which is something we started to do a couple of years ago. But if you guys would like to come back and hold down for a few hours, we'd be happy to have you.
I have to laugh at that, because I remember when you first did, everyone went, "Oh, God, I don't want to do that." Now we're mad you're not inviting us.
I remember having, having a lot of fun in there, because it is upfront and close-up and personal, with all of those people that come both from Comox and visitors away, and you learn a lot of things while you're saying that the bathrooms are open.
Exactly.
But my, my question was actually to do with budget, on time, on budget, all of that kind of good stuff.
There's Snidgy Extra, which will cover things like storage unit, paying the storage unit to keeping the website alive, to those kinds of things, so we are in the black.
All right, well, thank you. Excellent presentation. Counselor? Echo doesn't give you a no sound.
Counselor, you guys, you go.
Counselor, you guys, you got a lot.
All right, so we'll move on to business items on the agenda. Third quarter financial statement report for receipt. Move this. On receipt, down under favor. Our director of finance is here for any questions. Generally a positive report until the end of September. All right, any more questions? The, yes. Also from our director of finance, the Comox Fire Protection District made a new agreement with the recommendation that the town renewed that agreement with the fire protection district for additional five years, and the contract is back. But that's better. So I'll go to the end of December 2029. There are a few minor changes in terms of prescription of fire departments, Comox fires, and how the assessments are calculated. And the trustees for this fire protection district have a permit to breach it, so a motion to approve, and we've got that, although with a favor. Then we'll move to the initial item, which is new. So this is from our recreation director regarding ownership of the Hopaflo Dragon Boat.
I'd like to move that we have this going to the staff report regarding the other Marina issue.
Yeah, well, there's sort of two elements to this. One is the transfer of ownership, and the other is the mortgage. Possibly could deal with the transfer of ownership first, that's something probably more imminent, I would expect. Yes. So maybe we can split that too. So the recommendation that council authorize the transfer of ownership of the town's 16 Dragon Boat back to the original Comox Valley Dragon Boat Society. On move that.
Second.
And any questions regarding that?
So that's everything. They're taking over everything on that, and so then the only other outstanding item would be the mortgage?
Correct. Okay. So I will see if there's anything else. Although in favor, motion's carried. And the mortgage situation you'd like to have included in the staff report? Is there anything imminent on that?
Perhaps you worship that the committee could recommend approval for this year, which gives them some certainty. And then in the process, we'll deal with the remaining four years as well. So just so that they understand that we're not proposing to kick them out.
No, no, no. The motion would be that the town is to continue the mortgage existence with it, just but without cost for a period of one year. On move that. Yep. Moving to the second. All right, I believe, oh, Counselor Price, you wanted to make announcements.
Thank you. And I'd just like to remind everybody on Remembrance Day on Friday that the museum will be open after the service until 2:00.
That's emphasis being placed on the, was it the hundred second?
Hundred and second, yes. A lot more memorabilia that people have loaned, and there are Italian. Hope you can make it.
We do have an in-camera meeting, so motion is required under section 90B and speed of the meeting check.
Move this.
Down under favor. Motion's carried, so we'll adjourn briefly while.